All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. The opening session prayer is going to be led by Ricky Dodson and the Pledge of Allegiance by Ben Daner.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day you give. We thank you for watching over and protecting us and keeping us healthy and safe every day, Father. Father, we just ask everything we do tonight first will be pleasing for to you first and foremost, Father, for the betterment of the children of Loganton County, Father. Father, we just ask you to be with us and keep us safe the rest of this night. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes from the September tenth twenty twenty four meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Alice Reed, seconded by Mitch Stonecifer. Any question? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, then we'll move on to the addition or deletions to the proposed agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? All right. Then I'll move on to the approval of the October eighth twenty twenty four meeting agenda. Do you have a motion? Motion by Ben Daner, seconded by Ashley. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the executive action items. Approval of a low bid of one hundred twenty nine thousand three hundred dollars from VirtuCom for ViewSonic interactive display boards. Do you have a motion? Motion by James Klaus, seconded by Melissa Savage. Any discussion?
Fifty.
Oh.
Fifty.
Uh, William Maston.
Yes.
Ashley Carr.
Yes.
James Klaus.
Yes.
Ben Daner.
Yes.
Ricky Dodson.
Yes.
Mike Hayes.
Yes.
Shirley Myers.
Yes.
Alice Reed.
Yes.
Melissa Savage.
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer.
Yes.
Ten four zero, pose motion passes.
All right, then we'll go to the consent agenda items. I'll read all of these off and approve them all together. Number one is one forty one fiscal year twenty five general purpose school revisions, number two. Number two is one forty two fiscal year twenty five ESTER three point one revision, number one. Number three is one forty two fiscal year twenty five ARP homeless two point oh revision, number one. Number four is one forty two fiscal year twenty five CTE Perkins basic revision, number one. Number five is one forty two fiscal year twenty five ARP homeless two point oh revision, number two. Number six is one forty two fiscal year twenty five CCLC cohort twenty twenty three original budget. Number seven is one forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA partnership for systemic change K through twelve revision, number one. Number eight is one forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA partnership for systemic change preschool revision, number one. Number nine is one forty two fiscal year twenty five title one A revision, number one. Number ten is one forty two fiscal year twenty five title two A revision, number one. Number eleven is one forty one fiscal year twenty five title four revision, number one. Number twelve is one forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA part B revision, number one. And thirteen is one forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA preschool revision, number one. Do you have a motion to approve those?
I'll make it.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, seconded by Shirley Myers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the new business. Consider approval of twenty twenty four local education agency compliance report. I'll take a motion for.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alice Reed.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ashley Carr. Now, we're complying and everything in that.
Yes, we are complying, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two, consider approval of fiscal year twenty five ESTER three point oh application board approval school year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by James Klaus.
Second.
Seconded by Ben Daner. Any discussion?
Is that the end of the ESTER funds?
Yes, definitely.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, the T- the TSa accountability report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ricky Dodson. Seconded by James Klaus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number four, consider second reading of approval of the following board policies as recommended by TSVA. Policy four point seven zero zero testing programs and policy four point six zero zero grading system. Have a motion? Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, seconded by Shirley Myers. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to OCA recognition, Jennifer Islander. She is not here tonight. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
No.
All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ricky Dodson, seconded by James Klaus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the work session. Does anybody need to go to the bathroom or anything before?
Ricky. I'll do that.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the work session. The item one work session is the technology update with Brent Thrasher.
Um, so as far as we're at five here, planning to now just do a update twice a year to the board of just kind of keep you guys informed of what was going on and some of the major projects that we've been working on in technology in the district. So I just kind of made an outline of that for you all, but I'll go through each of these. We've recently updated our websites for all of our schools. This also included the launch of a mobile app, so I think that'll be something that's valuable for parents. Most people work off of the cell phone today other than a computer for the majority of their work, you know, that they're on the internet, so I think that that kind of is following where folks are today. But we're excited to get that launched out there. We're putting out the information about that and helping people get that installed and begin using that. We, by making this move, we also consolidated, we had two different platforms. One for, you know, our websites and, you know, communicating with parents that way, but we also had a platform called School Messenger and we use that to push out like the text messages and phone calls. And then so this platform allows us to do both of those tasks. So kind of helping us in consolidating and saving a little bit in costs there. Another big initiative that we've been working on is with the addition of another technician in the district, we are now working on a rotating schedule. So we have a technician out at a school, at schools every day of the week. So, and it's kind of, their time is allocated based on kind of like the school size. So our larger schools like Rickman and Livingston Academy has a technician there three days out of the week, whereas our smaller schools will have technicians there twice a week. And so that has been, I've had a lot of good feedback from principals and from teachers on how that's improved, just getting those issues resolved because things may just, you know, they just come up and, you know, it's, it's hard to wait a day for somebody to come out to the school, so when they're there they can just go grab them and get, get those issues resolved, so I think that's been a really good thing. We have, of course, as the, the board has allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for technology, a refresh recycle of technology in the district for teacher devices as well as student devices. We've already purchased and deployed the thirty five teacher devices. So our technicians have got those out and set up and with the teachers. We've purchased five hundred and three student devices and of course that covers our fifth and ninth grade students. And because of the price that we were able to get these at, we were then able to go ahead and allocate sixty seven to A H Roberts and then attend to Reach Academy. Another big initiative that we've worked on at the close of summer and starting into this school year was a complete overhaul of the intercom system of Livingston Academy. They had an intercom system that was analog based, it's an older based system, and we've converted that to a modern IP based system. Our technicians were able to do this work and which saved the district quite a bit of money in doing the labor of installing. This is actually a pretty straightforward conversion. And this new system actually enables a lot of new functionality that we didn't have before. For example, they can make pages to just the hallways, whereas in the past they had to page the whole building or, or nothing. And one of the other bullets there is that it, it helped us with the bell system and they, they use music during the class changes. And so that's helped that to be more accurate. We had some issues where that would slowly get off, off schedule as time went on and we'd have to go out and reprogram it every so often, so that's more reliable. And also it's easier for the school staff to make changes to that schedule if they need to, like if they're a two hour late or, for example, we recently did the ACT test, so they were able to just turn that off so there's no distractions while the testing is going on. So that's a, a big benefit. And this, with this new system, we kind of did a lot of research in doing this upgrade and kind of like the groundwork for upgrades to our other schools, so we can leverage the, the notification server that's, that's used for this kind of backbone of this system. We could use that to upgrade our other schools and kind of have the whole district tied in on a single system. We could, technically, we could actually make a call to Livingston Academy from a phone here at central office if we needed to, we can make an all call page. And so that notification system can control the bell system from here out to each of the schools. So, and we're looking at, I met this morning me and Ms. Jean Smith, we had a call about an emergency alert system that would integrate with this new intercom system that we had installed at Livingston Academy. So, so there's some future improvements and capabilities that we might be able to leverage because of this new system, so I'm excited, I'm excited about that. And that would be an application that has like a panic button where they could, you know, issue, you know, initiate a lockdown or, or it can integrate with these badge systems that we're, we're looking into that may initiate a lockdown. So those are some, some future forward things that we're looking at. We've done some improvements to our security camera systems. We've deployed ninety cameras across the district. We've, and that's, the breakdown of that is for fifty two and thirty eight, so fifty two indoor and outdoor cameras. So that's provided a lot more coverage across the district. And, you know, some of the schools like Allen's Elementary, they went from having, I think it was thirteen cameras, we added twenty cameras to that school, so it's a huge improvement in coverage that they've received as far as being able to see their schools and, and everything, so that's a, that's a big accomplishment. And, and then in that upgrade, we retained or repurposed the fifty, the fifty three cameras that we already had, so we didn't just rip stuff out and throw it away. So we're, we're, you know, trying to make use of everything, make it go the farthest that we can, so.
Does this have, you know, view capability or view beyond side?
Right now, we have beyond side in order to be able to do that. And we allocated, reallocated storage to improve the playback capabilities. So where we have higher demand with cameras, we put in, you know, more storage for that, for those locations. And then, and I expected this, we're actually still installing some of the cameras. I know Wilson has, theirs, the installers are going to be coming Thursday and it's been about three days turnaround on, on each side as far as getting those installed. So I anticipate us to be able to wrap this one up pretty quick. We are also working on installing some cell phone boosters in each of our schools. Officer Paul Terry had connected me with a resource that he had that the provider, they have for their emergency cell phone service through the police department. They have a program where we can get these cell phone boosters at no cost. And so I worked with them about identifying areas of need.
I mean, I just. So when I was at the county, we put one at Hillhand and we put one at Allen's because that was the two schools that had no phone signal. But they, they would only do a few phones.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so is this one gonna, you know, it was like an emergency situation if a teacher had to, I mean, there's no signal. I mean, Livingston are signaling Hillhand and Allen's.
Yeah. Well, and that's what I, I originally thought was a repeater basically where there's an antenna on outside of the building and it's receiving a lot of signal that you get and then repeating that out in the building. But these are actually a different technology where they connect to our network and over the internet they provide, they call it a micro cell tower. And so this is a device that's, it's not just repeating, but it, and well, one thing to keep in mind, it's only AT&amp;T, but that's the service that they use. So in addition, it provides AT&amp;T service, but there's a secondary band that is dedicated for first responders and they utilize that, so they kind of have like this high priority channel in the building. So that's, but yeah, I was thinking of when we were first talking about it, I thought it was just a, like a repeater and I thought, well, we already have that.
There's a, right there at Hillhand, you can see it on top, the ones they put in, but it's a Verizon one. But I think AT&amp;T's got better signal at Hillhand than Verizon has anyway, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've got repeaters, we're going to cover every school with this. Because I know Officer Terry said that, you know, that Livingston Academy, even though outside you've got really good coverage, but once you get inside the building with all the block walls and the metal and everything, it, the signal quality goes down. And so we're going to get those locates, that'll help improve, so.
Isn't that through First Man?
Uh, First.
First Man?
Yeah, First Man, yeah, that's the guy. So I actually have those in my office, they've been programmed. She gave me an email just the other day that she thought that they had them, the first, working with the, had a program and I think we're ready to start working on installing those, so.
That's what I do, sometimes when the virus goes out, Allen's, Hillhand, whatever, there's no phones. No signal, I mean, all the cell phones get out of there, so it's.
Yeah, so it's a good thing. And, and these have like a battery backup on them, so they'll continue to work. So, that's a good thing. And then of course, as we already mentioned, the ViewSonic's up at that on there, we are, this not happening yet, we're issuing those POs and getting those ordered, so. That's going to cover every classroom in the district will have a ViewSonic interactive panel. And so what that is, is basically it's a large, you know, TV like this, but it's actually a touchscreen and has a built in computer so that teachers and the students can go up to the board and interact with lessons and work from that. So that, that also will work in conjunction with their Surface, Surface Pros that we have issued to all the students, all the teachers, and they can cast to that. So that gives the teachers a lot of flexibility in the way that they deliver instruction, so they're really nice.
This is every classroom?
Yeah, that's why, my understanding was of, this real worked with the Title One coordinators and they kind of counted it up and they had some carryover funds that they were gonna purchase for all the remaining classrooms, and so every classroom, the teachers will have a ViewSonic. But that's not, it's purchased, a lot of, we have a lot of them already out there, yeah.
I was just gonna say to you, just to go back to that bid, somebody had asked how many? So fifty, I think we purchased, that price was for the whole bid. We had to bid out, do you remember how many we bid out? Was it a hundred, a hundred and fifty or something? I can't remember.
We, yeah, it was fifty units weekly.
Okay.
But they had, you know, like they've got like the, the PC, the slotting PC network and the mally bracket.
Okay.
Yeah.
I actually had to go back to the phone thing, but, so is this, so the, you know, the worry about it before was it'd only do so many, so the old systems like if parents were out in the parking lot, it'd pick up. So is this one just gonna be teachers that's gonna be able, or is it gonna be like limited to the number of people that can connect to it?
They, they said that we could actually configure it both ways. They said that it has, it broadcasts AT&amp;T signal, so anybody that has AT&amp;T would connect to it by default. But then there's that secondary band that first responders can get no matter what. So regardless of how we'd carry it, that would work. But then they said also if we didn't want parents or, you know, teachers and students connecting to this, we could just, we could eliminate that and make it only for the first responders.
My concern was though, the teachers need to be able to, because before there was only like five phones, so. Who's to say who was the five that could connect to it? And if somebody had something going in a room and they couldn't call an intercom, maybe had some situation going on, I think it's be able to teachers, I think.
Yeah, I think so, I think. That, that was my attempt to leave it, whereas it will just broadcast AT&amp;T signal to cover in, in those schools, so.
But you choose, you enter the teacher's names or whatever names from each school. It's a.
Yeah, it's just.
But is it the only ones that's got AT&amp;T?
Yeah, it's only for AT&amp;T.
But, I mean, so if, if the teacher's got Verizon, it's not gonna work.
Yeah. My understanding, boy, that's just the worst. So I guess that's why AT&amp;T's happy to put one, you know, they'll, they'll provide that, so.
You said you'd reallocated the storage, you have that history.
Yeah. It varies, so our cameras record on motion, and so if there's a lot of activity, then it's gonna do a lot of recording. So it, I, it, I don't really have like a set number of how far back we can go.
The current one there, that Ben had mentioned about only five people can get on it, could it be upgraded to more, the current one?
Um, and I'm not really familiar with those, so.
Well, that one comes from nine one one, had that one, then the one at Allen's. And they still work, because occasionally on the phone I see, you know, it pops up where if you're someone that got a, a cell phone booster, it shows, but, I mean, could we, could we contact Verizon and see if they put in one free, like you're talking about AT&amp;T? Because, you know, I'm thinking more people probably have Verizon than they have AT&amp;T. But, you know, if you got so many teachers, it's, maybe, maybe we need to know, well, I don't know, you need to ask if they got AT&amp;T or not, but, I mean, if something happened at school and we got an AT&amp;T booster, I mean, we need to have something else without AT&amp;T phone, I guess.
That's something that's really, you need to ask and see.
It should be an out of the phone.
Yeah.
Through the First Man, the teachers can actually get First Man as a first responder now, so.
Looking so big like an app or something.
No, it's a service, they have changed their service over, but I've got First Man myself. But whenever we examine, they're talking about giving it to more of them and it's like, you can get it if it's your teacher. So teachers have been added to that group of first responders.
So is that saying another Verizon?
No, it's, it's.
AT&amp;T.
Two, First Man AT&amp;T.
Can anyone apply, change if they're a teacher, I mean, is that an app they can get free?
It's not an app, it's the service itself, but teachers can apply, can get First Man. So I'm often lucky to get that.
Might get some information about that and send that out to all the teachers that they are aware of, so. Brent, we appreciate it.
Brent, thank you all.
Thank you.
Don't ever leave us, Brent.
All right, with the technology update, the, we had, just to remind all the board members, we have an upcoming meeting on November the seventh to the tenth, it's in TSVA Convention Gaylord Offland Resort in Nashville, Tennessee. If you haven't talked to Crystal about that, get with her and she can get everything set up and ready to go for you and we'll go from there. Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, I had a Sherry play off this week to look up the pay scale when we give the increase back in July for the per professional from a dollar to two dollars. And there's a few of them, they really ain't enough difference between, I'd like for us to study it, look it over. And you got that, shouldn't have any, did everybody get that in their package? I guess I'm on one guy. But anyway, I'll get Sherry to give you some one, but like, obviously like custodians is, like say five years they're making fourteen seventy five, where your custodian and, and maintenance is making fifteen on five, only thirty cents more in this half time maintenance, or her. So there's not enough difference in some areas, I think we need to go back, revisit some of that and see what's in stake, like a lunchroom monitor and a regular food service manager. There's not a lot of difference there either. I mean, there's just a few areas we might want to tweak or, if we went, if we did raise the rest of them up, if we wanted to do that sometime, two dollars an hour, it'd cost us a hundred and thirty seven thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars and twenty three cents to give the two dollars instead of the dollar and two dollars, so. That's something to look at and study, I've had a few people ask me about it. And I thought, I thought everybody got this, now she'll give it to me.
Talking about that, could we, I mean, could we get all the attachments? I know we get the email, but I think most of it's, I'm looking at it on the phone, I don't have it printed off like when we actually vote on the, like all the, we usually.
You got it all on your phone, all the attachments.
Yeah, but I mean, looking at the budget on my phone, though, it's hard when you're sitting here voting on it. What I'm saying, if we had actual printed, you know, with the agenda packet where it had all the attachments where we could, I mean, I don't know if that's how we usually, you know, second meeting, I'm just saying. But it's hard to vote, I mean, me, it's hard to vote on budgets and stuff when I don't have the actual, you know, attachments right here.
It is hard to look at on the phone, I agree it is for me, Ben. But I, I have Sherry that texts and we even made it to copy, just kind of looking over and study it yourself and looking at some of the areas of pay scales, we can get up out there five years, fifteen years, there's not a lot of difference in some, you know.
Well, and when we were studying that and whatever, and everything too, what it is, is every year instead of increasing the fifteen year part, we're increasing going, we're increasing the salary, we're not increasing the gap in between that to say, hey, and that was back when we went to that pay scale, I was like, you know, we got to look at this because longevity on there, that was a big important thing on me was the people who have worked here to the longest is the people that I felt that we needed to reward, everything, and we didn't talk about going, that sort of died in the conversation about expanding, if you're here for one year to two years, increasing the amount from there, it was more along the lines of, no, we just want to raise them up so that they're making what these people in other positions are making, and that's the thing on there is, you know, I, I'm a firm believer that if you have somebody there that's been here with us for five years, ten years, fifteen years, they definitely should be making more money than somebody that we just pulled in and they just started.
Yeah.
So that is something that we can look at too, but we've also got to take into consideration on this that the budget constraints coming up where we've moved through our ESTER money, we've moved through a lot of that money and with TSA, they're starting to, if I'm not mistaken, they're starting to contract the money that they're sending out to on there, so that's one thing we've got to be aware of. If we're increasing and we have more people here, then we're not going to be able to fit all of that in the budget, so there's going to come a breaking point.
Yeah.
So we've got to pay attention to that too. As we're looking through all of that. With that being said, does anybody have anything else?
Julie Poston got a good report, she cancer free, and she went back in this last week and they, they pulled a few boxes on, she don't care what I'm saying, there was no cancer in her body. Praise the Lord. Looking forward to coming back to work here pretty soon.
Will she come back part time or can come back full time?
She'd want to come back full time, you know, she's still got to have one more little surgery and then after that, I think she'll be back full time. She's, she's doing great, looks good and doing good.
Uh, CTE building, is it up and ready to go or?
It's, it's, uh, it's almost, it's almost ready. And I was, I've talked to Leslie about that, we need to have a, like a, a grand opening, something so we can, and that's what we're looking at, doing that, so.
One other thing, Michael, about the engineering and stuff coming to schools, are they about to?
So, uh, last email I got from him, all the surveys should be done the first week of November. So once all those are done, then we hopefully go next step from there. So that's the last communication I got from Brian.
Thank you.
So they're gonna do work at all the schools or what?
Uh, no, Allen's, Rickman, I'm sorry. Allen's, Rickman, Hillhand, and Livingston Academy's getting a cafeteria remodel. So that's the only ones right now, so. We went back through two years ago, year and a half. Year and a half, whatever, walked every school, uh, found out the needs they had, then kind of set down what architect needed to do versus what our maintenance could do. Um, Steve had a list and not the majority of all the maintenance stuff out. Uh, like Allen's had some water issues and maintenance put in on, on their own drainage system out there. Uh, they've done a lot of work, we use S R money to replace, we had a hundred and eighty-five, uh, simple air units that went, that was put in in the two thousand and one building program, so they were twenty-three years old. So we replaced all those, we used, uh, I think about four billion dollars of extra money to do a lot of that work. Uh, instead of using an architect, we just kind of got with Steve and had him and his team to kind of do some of that. But the big projects as far as the additional classrooms would be Wilson, I'm sorry, Rickman, Allen's, Hillham is the classroom additions. Then the Livingston Academy will be the cafeteria remodel, uh, to make it bigger for, in the cooking area.
Reason I asked was Montgomery to ask, you know, there's some water issue at Hillham in the front, water's going under the foundation, the gutters are, I guess leaking and it's, you can see where the foundation, you know, it's going under it. And I just wondered if it'd be like gutter repair or.
Yeah, and if we, if you can turn that over to Steve.
I'll make sure that's good.
Uh, because he's got some foundation guys that done some work, I believe at Allen's, uh, and a couple of other places, and they came in and fixed some things there.
Cause I, I don't know what's, you know, under, but you can tell when it rains, aw, it, it all goes right under the.
There was a big hole up there too.
Yeah.
I wonder.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Mike, you think we could get the engineers, uh, to come in at the next meeting and do a report, especially, you know, for the newer members who aren't aware of where we are? And for some of the, uh, older members, like myself can't remember everything, it'd be a nice refresher.
And what is the projected date like of the start of the classroom, of these?
I, I can't answer that now. Uh, so, once they get the survey back, which he said should be the first week of November, um, the way I understand it, after that, he would sit down with the principals at each school, uh, to talk about where we decided the new additions would go, to make sure it lines up with what they want to do. Uh, I know when we originally talked about Rickman, we were talking about going to the very far end, close to two ninety-three, but then it really didn't make sense because we needed it closer to the gym. Uh, so we elected to go there, so that's why we want the principals involved to kind of, you know, are you going to move the higher grades to this new section? Are you going to use the lower grade, I, whatever they want to do to make sure it makes sense. Um, so once they do that, then they'll do some more work internally with their, you know, probably civil engineers and, uh, architects from there. Then it has to go to bid, you know, once it goes to bid, then at that point, we've just got to determine who's going to bid it, when they're going to start doing all that. So the bottom and everything's done, um, we don't have to worry about the financial aspect of it, it's already done, ready to go. Uh, as soon as they get to work and we can get it bid out, then we would go from there.
Hopefully spring.
Probably will be springtime if I'm guessing, so. But I find that.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
Alright, we'll go ahead and bring the work session to an end.